of the 2020 presidential election. This is the first time a potential criminal case against Trump has been announced. USA Radio News.
I need four more of the biscuit carnitas, two burnt end platters, three-
The kitchen at Kai's barbecue is firing on all cylinders.
Greg, help me bring these to the pickup counter.
He needs food runners who can hit the ground quickly.
Eighty-six on the chicken and we're short staffed. Let's pick it up.
Indeed can help him hire great people fast.
I need Indeed.
Indeed you do. Instant Match instantly connects you with quality candidates whose resumes on Indeed match your sponsored job description. Visit indeed.com/credit and get $75 towards your first sponsored job. Terms and conditions apply.
You've heard us talk about the luxurious Giza Dream Sheets for MyPillow. Well, now they're on sale. Sixty percent off as low as $39.99. Lots of other overstock items and a free copy of Mike Lindell's book, What Are the Odds from Crack Addict to CEO with any purchase, but you've got to use my promo code USA. Go to mypillow.com, the radio listener's square. Use my promo code USA or call 1-800-951-8175.
The Federal Reserve is expected to raise interest rates on the money banks pay for their money.
And even higher interest rates are on the way as Fed Chair Jerome Powell said he supports a traditional quarter point increase in the Federal Reserve's benchmark short-term interest rate rather than a larger increase at this time that some policymakers are proposing.
How understanding weeds will help you with your plan to eradicate them. That's coming up on This Land of Ours.
I'm Agriculture Commissioner Nikki Fried. Everyone knows Florida grows the world's best produce. From citrus to strawberries, watermelon to blueberries, our produce growers feed our families and the world. With over 125 million in annual revenue for growers, the Fresh from Florida program helps Florida farmers stay competitive in a tough marketplace. Learn more at followfreshfromflorida.com.
I was probably a little bit like you. There was a lot of talk about the COVID-19 vaccines. I didn't know what to believe, and I tell you, everyone has an opinion. Some of my friends got vaccinated and somewhere against it. But I knew this was an important decision, so I went to somebody I already trusted, my doctor. It's your call, so talk to your doctor or healthcare provider and make the decision that's right for you. You can go to getvaccineanswers.org for the latest information. That's getvaccineanswers.org. Brought to you by the Ad Council.
There's an incredible variety of weeds out there and most fall into a few basic categories. Understanding these can help you eradicate the weeds from your farm. Tap rooted weeds such as dandelions are slow to start and hard to eradicate once established. Their seeds need light to germinate, but they can also spread by root cuttings. If you till up tap rooted weeds, you'll end up with lots more tap rooted plants. Niche fillers such as white clover or crab grass take up empty space left unoccupied by changes in environmental conditions. Opportunists like the false strawberry spread by runners and make use of the fertility we add to the top few inches of our soil. Then they exploit the inevitable compaction created when we leave tilled soil bare and underutilized. On tomorrow's program, the multi-step approach to mitigate weeds. I'm Kathy Isom, Southeast AgNet.
When it really counts. Depend on the source for the latest weather updates, keeping you ahead of the storm. 96.3 FM, 1370 AM, The Source.
Today will be mostly sunny and pleasant with a high of 82 to 84, then partly cloudy tonight, low 59 to 65. Plenty of sunshine Friday, high tomorrow, 82 to 86. Then this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, both will be mostly sunny and warm. High on Saturday, 83 to 86, high on Sunday, 86 to 90. From the Florida Weather Center, I'm Holly Holdren.
You know what you want to do in retirement, but do you know how to get there? Join Gary and Don Crawford of Pinnacle Retirement Advisors for Retirement with Pinnacle, Saturday mornings at nine, to get answers to your retirement planning questions. Plan today so you can do the things you've always dreamt about doing in retirement. Don't miss Retirement with Pinnacle with Gary and Don Crawford, Saturday mornings at nine. Firm offers insurance services. Investment advisory services offered only by duly registered individuals through A Wealth Management LLC.
This hour of Ocala Talks is brought to you in part by Blockers Furniture. Go see all their specials at blockersfurniture.com.
This is Ocala Talks with Tom Schmidt, bringing stories that are important to our community in and around Ocala.
Plus, of course, a splash of sports as well.
Now here's your host, Tom.
Welcome back to Ocala Talks on a Thursday in the building to talk all that is Marion County and the Marion County Commission. Stacy Causey, public rela-, are you the Public Relations Director?
No, sir.
You just worked for Public Relations?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I knew, I knew it was Public Relations something. What is your exact title?
Senior Public Relations Specialist.
Senior Public Relations Specialist. So there you go. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. Thankfully, the traffic bubble worked in my favor today.
There you go. Let's get some things out of the way first. Very important day coming up, March 26th. It's Marion County Day.
Yes, sir. We are glad to have it back. We've missed a couple of people over the last couple of years because we had to-
Pandemic.
Yeah. We're ready to see people, ready to get out and about and showcase all the services that nonprofits in our community have to offer for our residents.
Talk about though, how much fun it's going to be because not only did it give you an introduction to all the services that the county offers,
Yeah.
but this may be the best kids zone we're, that's ever going to happen.
Well, first of all, it's free.
It's free.
So as a parent, that rings a bell for me, but we, we let Parks and Recreation just have at it today or this year with the kids zone, and they have gone overboard, which is great for the people coming. We've got all kinds of recreational activities that Parks and Recreation will feature their clubs, but we also have a lot of games, bounce house. The, the archery station is a big hit for everyone and we usually have lines on that, but we also have a petting zoo this year, so that's exciting for the kids.
It is very exciting. There'll be history where you can learn history and everything. It's 178th year.
Yeah.
We've been around a while.
Yeah, we're still looking good though.
And it is a free community event. If you want to find out more information, you can go to marionfl.org/marioncountidy.
That's right.
So let's, let's talk about what happened at the meeting on, on Tuesday.
A lot.
There were some things, but, but there were some things about 318 that took place.
Yes, sir.
And I need to clarify some of those things. There were some warehouse building approvals.
There were approvals, yes.
Right, right next to the interstate, so-
Correct.
There's going to have to be some infrastructure help done out there because I, there's going to be a study done. I think I read there's going to be a study done to see if that area will hold up to the traffic for those warehouses.
There's always a traffic study when there's a large development or even if it's residential, commercial industry, it doesn't matter. There's a traffic study and thankfully with it being logistically close to I-75, the FDOT is, helps us out a little bit with that. They're already updating just about every interchange that we have with I-75 in the county.
Well, 318 needs an updating.
It's, it's probably on the list. I actually go to the FDOT website. They have a dashboard that you can look per county and watch what they're doing and what they're planning on doing and get information about the projects.
Well, I know that they, they, 484 is on their list. That's, that's coming up soon. And it needs all the help it can get.
And we are thankful for it.
Yeah. They just finished 200 and it's amazing now how-
Isn't it a smooth ride?
It used to be a bottleneck.
Yes.
And now it's still very busy, but it's not a bottleneck anymore.
Right. It, it, we have to grow with our county's population.
Right.
Unfortunately, we can't close the doors. Everybody loves Marion County and the secret's out.
But 318 is going to have a big, I mean, there's going to be a big industrial complex built up there.
It is, it is. Means more jobs. That's always-
Million and a half square feet of buildings up there. It's a lot of square feet. Doesn't mean more jobs for Marion County. And then the, another hurdle was cleared by the World Equestrian Center and they purchased the jockey club.
Another step in the process.
Right. They, they've cleared another hurdle, but a lot of people think that that means the county's just green lighted the World Equestrian Center to do whatever it wants at the jockey club.
Right. And this is one of-
Is that correct?
It's not. This is one of the things that I love about my job is there's so many facets to the process that is government that one approval doesn't necessarily mean they're going to start building and breaking ground tomorrow. In particular, this, the former Ocala Jockey Club area, this is going to require a change to the comprehensive plan, which is our plan through 2045 for the county, infrastructure, resources, everything. So in order to get that done, the comprehensive plan is approved by the state. So what happened Tuesday night was we approved, the board approved a alteration to the text, the definition of that type of land. So we're now going to have to send that definition to the state because they approve anything and everything, especially where development is regards to our comprehensive plan. So no, they're not breaking ground tomorrow or next week or next month, but we are following the process of due diligence to make sure that we're not missing anything on behalf of the residents, our customers, which are the residents and the developer, and our future.
So there'll be no, no 250-room hotel built by 2023?
Not tomorrow. It is a process and it's a process on purpose.
And by the way, if the Roberts do what they did with the World Equestrian Center out there at the jockey club, it can only, in my opinion, it can only benefit that area.
There's, there's pros and cons to everything. Every choice has pros and cons.
Of course there is.
We just want to make sure we do it smart.
Well, let's take a phone call real quick. You're on with Stacy Causey from the county. Good morning.
Oh, good morning. I have a question about the operations of the county. The county commission made a ruling, this was years ago when I was really active with the politics in the county, local politics. Does a past ruling still uphold today? Doesn't that have to be voted on to remove that ruling, to so-called advance their projects?
So that's kind of, I'd like a little bit more specifics, but in general, anything that's made into an ordinance or resolution has to be brought up in a publicly noticed meeting and publicly noticed is putting it in the legal ad section in the paper or on our website, at least tend to, we try to give it two weeks in advance so that people can plan to attend if they want to comment.
The, the thing is a ruling they've made was no co-mingling of subdivisions. And that was the one ruling. And now we have two or three developers that want to connect to the roads that, into the subdivision I live in. And myself and our, our community board and everything else are trying to fight that.
Understood.
But I understand progress, but you know, they're, they're going to wreck our subdivision for the sake of developing around it. Was, this ruling was held up as far as Trilogy or what was before, what was called before Trilogy became Trilogy, as far as connecting up the roads from Trilogy to where I live.
Okay.
Thanks for the, thanks for the call, Sunny. We were up against time, but he, he wants to know about, you know, can, does, has the county done something where intermingling is now allowed?
Okay. So I'm going to check on that with the comprehensive plan. That's not, that's not a knee jerk reaction decision. So that will have to go before the state if it deals with the comprehensive plan. Can I get back to you, Tom, and then you answer Sunny?
Yeah, yeah. Sunny's a loyal listener. He, he'll listen in here.
Tom, all right, I got you covered. Good.
Good. So, but, but, and that, that's the kind of question we like when somebody calls in to ask that kind of question. Because that, you know, concerns citizens. We, we need to know what they're concerned about.
Well, I love when people ask questions instead of make up their own stories.
Right.
I mean, I, I want to get the facts out there. Good, bad, ugly.
And I appreciate that. Tell me about this newsletter you got coming out.
So many of, we used to have a very large description to what was the county connection and that was brought back as Marion Monthly. So we're going to try to give an insider's view. It's not necessarily a Citizens Academy a month, but it's behind the scenes of what's going on in the county, asking for questions so that we can come up and, and make sure we have the answers that you're expecting for whatever your listeners are going through. But we are getting our signup process done right now so that we're trying to get our database. If you want to go to marionfl.org, it's right there on the front screen. Sign up for the Marion Monthly and then we'll go ahead and get you connected with the, with the county.
Very good. And that's another way just to stay transparent and keep the citizens connected.
We're trying, yeah. We're trying to open all, all communication lanes.
So if it was up to me, March 1st is, it was deemed, proclamation deeming March 2023 as employee, 2022, excuse me, as Employee Appreciation Month?
Yes, sir.
So we just give you the award every day?
Aw, thank you. No. No, I have a whole team behind me and I love working with the people that I get to ask questions, bring the roads questions to. They're full of insight and knowledge that I am glad that I don't have to carry around all day.
But, but it, it's very important though, to I think, have a employee appreciation time just to let every employee of the county, from the, from the janitors all the way up to the, the, the county administrator.
Yes, sir.
That, you know, everything that they do, no matter how small or how big their contribution is really appreciated.
It's all an intricate network and I love the fact that, you know, my engineers and my, even roads crews, not to separate them, but they need each other so badly to do a project. One project involves so many different tiers of people that we, and actually the BCC, like you said, recognized on March 1st, we've decided not just one day. We used to do it one day. Now we're going to do it one month because our employees worked through the pandemic. We didn't, we didn't get any off days.
You were, you were essential workers.
Yeah. We, so we want to make sure that our, our staff, our employees, our team know how much they're valued. And we've got, actually gotten some contributions for the community through the month to help us out. Can you mind if I mention?
Go ahead.
Awesome. Well, thank you to the Marion Theater for movie nights for the employees. Jewels, balloons and party supplies, that's just a fun in half. Jeremiah's Ice has given us a few discounts as well as Robert's Downtown Chapel has helped us fund a couple of the events that we're trying to have for our employees this month.
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
So I saw this and I was like, Jimmy Patronus. No, the CFO of the state, Jimmy Patronus stopped in the Marion County recently.
He did. It was awesome. I got a little bit of a, you know, a fan.
Jimmy's a good guy too.
He's very in touch with the first responders and they know it. It was the respect in the Rolling Greens Fire Station where we had it, the new one that was built with penny sales tax funds. We invited him in there. They had the search and rescue semi in the background. It was a perfect shot for PR's perspective and he gave, he performed a challenge coin ceremony for our Tax Force eight members, which include Ocala Fire Rescue, Marion County Fire Rescue and Gainesville Fire Rescue. They were part of the Sunnyside search and recovery efforts when the Miami condominium fell down.
Right. Yeah. When the Miami, it collapsed.
Yeah, last June.
Yeah. They went down there and helped rescue and then recover-
They did. 12-hour shifts. Yeah. That's, it's, you know, not, not fun, but-
So you're, you're a fan of, you're a fan of our CFO, huh?
I am. And actually I'm a fan of his PR team. They were excellent to work with. They knew exactly what they needed. They were contacting us the week prior. We had it all planned and we knew what we were going into. And I don't get that from all elected officials' PR teams and some of them don't have PR teams.
Right. The great thing about Jimmy is I've, I've, I've met Jimmy two or three different times and had a conversation with him. Great thing about Jimmy is he will tell you, he is only as good as the people he's surrounded by.
He did. He said that at least three times, but-
That's his thing. He's only as good. He's only as good as the people that surround him. He, he'll tell you. He does have a great team, but he'll tell you, look, without these people around me, I wouldn't be smart enough to do this. So, and, and he, you know, but it takes a team sometimes.
I really enjoyed that time.
Yeah. He's a good guy. He's a good guy. So Jimmy Patronus making a stop by. And by the way, that Rolling Hills Fire Department, the Rolling Hills Fire Station, amazing. It really is amazing. And built with the penny sales tax.
Yes, sir. Not the general fund.
All right. So let's talk about, I don't even know why this is on the agenda.
Because we want to make sure that it stays in everyone's mind.
Who cares about the litter task force? And there ain't even important people on that task force. Old Beth McCalls on that task force. That's right.
She is. Actually, she is always ready to get in front of the camera for us. So we appreciate her being-
I'm in jest. I am one of the voting members of the litter task force. And look, we, we have RFPs out right now-
We do. Or you do. Good job.
For, for marketing and everything.
Yeah.
And so we're, we're kind of at a standstill right now because of that. We're waiting for those to come back in.
We are in the process.
And right. And as those come back in, because marketing is going to be so much a part-
Of the behavioral change that we're hoping to get for, yeah.
You've got to keep it in people's minds all the time. It's not just saying, hey, don't throw garbage out.
Right. Because that seems too simple.
You got to have some marketing to make sure people get it ingrained in them that to keep Marion beautiful.
We're looking for a-
To don't mess with Marion is, is something that means something to everybody in Marion County because we want it to be not a trash filled county. We want it to be a beautiful county.
Right. And, and it deserves to be. We deserve to live in a beautiful county.
I don't deserve, I don't need to see washing machines on the side of the road.
Or mattresses in the middle of it.
Or mattresses in the, yeah. Or three or four garbage bags on the side of the road.
Correct.
Which if you put them on the side of my road, I may bring them back to you if I can find the address.
If you can find, I'm not telling you anything about that, but I will say, if you find litter on the side of the road, please give us a call.
Yeah.
We don't want it to be in, in safety issue. So 352-671-8465. I'm going to shout that out for Solid Ways, just right there.
Yeah. And there's so many different places to take your trash.
Yes.
With all the-
You have 18 recycling centers.
Exactly. You don't have to take, you don't have to make a trip to baseline. There are 18 separate recycling centers-
All over the county.
Around the county. And when I saw some of the numbers, what they were broke down to what it costs daily to pick up trash and to, 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 to process the trash and all, we could save a lot of money by not throwing trash out on the side of the road.
We can use that money in other programs. I mean, we can better the county if we just get a little help.
I, I, when I saw some of the financial numbers, I was like, we need to throw these people under the jail.
So I do have financial numbers, including staff time. And staff time, time is expensive nowadays.
Yeah.
And when I have employees and volunteers spending 4,000 hours a year to pick up litter.
Right.
How, how much-
4,000 hours. Just think, and I know they make more, some of them make more than 10, but just think if it's $10 an hour.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Just $10 an hour, just in labor, it cost us $40,000 a year.
Why do we want to pay that? We, do you know what we could do with that for our county?
Yeah. $40,000 a year.
Sorry. That's a soapbox for me.
Right. I understand. But then the sheer volume of trash.
Yes. Yes. These, we have, right now we have about 40 groups with the Adopt a Road program.
Right.
And we need to grow because those are only county roads.
There's 81 miles of road that we, we pick up right now with these groups because they do two miles at a time, but it's really not.
It's not. It's nowhere near what we need, but we do know that over, let's see, monthly, we have 120,000 pounds.
Right. 60 tons a month.
And then you, so you multiply that times a whole, 12, a whole year. It's 1.4 million pounds.
Yeah.
That's disgusting.
Yeah. It goes, I think, I think it was 720 tons a year. 720 tons a year of garbage on the road.
Yeah.
That's just what's picked up.
Right. That's true.
That's just what's picked up.
Well, we like to get everybody, I know that you guys are working hard on the committee, but we're still, you know, we answer questions all day, every day on the Litter Task Force site. You can comment directly. It's marioncountyfl/littertf for Task Force.
Yeah. And it's, look, there, it, there, there are 30 some odd people on this task force from all walks of life.
It's awesome.
I'm from the radio. We, we have, we have marketing people. We have people from Fish and Wildlife. We have people from the forest area.
Right.
We, we have edu-, from the school, we have from the, we have, we have garbage people that know that. We have people from the school system.
Correct.
Because we're all going to have to come together to do this.
Right. It's going to take every level, every part of our county.
You're going to have to teach from small child through adult not to throw trash out and not to litter.
We have a program that we, when people, when student drivers sign up for their school tag to park on the parking lot, they will get a, just a car trash bag. So we try to keep that even, you have no excuse.
And I will tell you, I will tell you, two of the, two of the mascots that we came up with to do this marketing.
Yes.
Top notch. Oh, wait, I was in on that. That's why. That's why.
You're a little biased. It's okay.
Uh, yeah, but we, you, you, great job. And, uh, you know, we meet over there. My, my part of the task force meets at their park, at the wreck, parking rec center, at the parking rec office. Yeah. So we, it's really hard work too. I didn't realize how much goes into doing something like this and how much, that's the word I'm looking for here so I don't be offensive. Bureaucracy that you have to dot I's and check, you have to dot I's and check T's.
Yes.
You know, cross T's to make sure it's done properly.
Right.
There's ordinances that need to be rewritten or reevaluated.
Any dollar allocated to it must be spent the exact way that it's allocated for. And oh, yeah, there's a lot of behind the scenes.
There goes into it.
Yes.
It's not just keep America beautiful. Let's move on.
Correct. No.
There's a really, a really a lot that goes into this.
Well, we appreciate your time especially.
And everybody that's dedicated. When you go to these meetings, everybody in that meeting is there because-
It's a cool house every time.
They're ready to do something about the trash problem in Marion County.
And that's exciting. As someone who can't do anything else except for talk about it, I love to see a community in action.
So two bronze medals and a gold medal are coming home.
Isn't that cool?
That is really cool. That the epicenter of ice skate, ice speed skating is Ocala, Florida.
It's the horse capital of the world.
Think about that. The epicenter of speed skating on ice is Ocala, Florida.
It's Florida. It's amazing. And, and you know, it's a connection to a couple of our county parks here, like-
Yeah.
Well, state, the state park at Baseline Trailhead was a practice place.
Certainly.
And then I believe it was Mantia. Yeah. Mantia practice at Cohajo. We got pictures of them when they were young.
In line skating. Yeah.
So we're pretty proud. We have more than a few connections, but we're working with the city right now to welcome them home properly. We want an event. We want this to be big because this is not something every community can say.
And we're talking about bronze medalist Brittany Bowe and Joey Mantia and gold medalist Aaron Jackson.
That's right. Good job, guys.
So we, I know we're doing something, the city of Ocala, the county, everybody's getting together to celebrate this.
Yeah. We're going, we're connecting so that we do one big, huge thing and it's simultaneous.
I've saved the best till last.
Oh, I love it.
And because I'm a, I'm an animal lover at heart. I have four rescues, dogs and a rescue cat. So-
Need another one?
No, well, my wife says it depends on what day it is. And you know, I was a former board member of the Humane Society of Marion County. So I know that shelters are needed and very important. And the no kill shelter that is at Marion County Animal Services, it's a very important part of what we do here.
It is, it is. And we need some room.
Yeah.
Um, every month, it seems, we have a different special to try to entice people. Today or in March, we're going to hook on to March 17th at St. Patty's Day. Cool. $17 adoptions, vaccinations, up to date, well, updated vaccinations, Marion County license, microchip and spay and neuter surgery. Bam.
For $17. That's, that's literally the microchip, the shots and the spay and neutering. If you did it on your own, it would be somewhere around 300 bucks.
Two to $300. Yeah.
And you're getting it for 17, right. You're getting it for 1,700.
$17.
1,700. No, no, $17 folks. It's St. Patrick's Day. We're doing it at $17. That's really a $200 to $300 expense for $17.
It's a great thing. And I, I love the, the, just the time and dedication that our animal services staff has. We wanted to take some of our adoptable pets out to this weekend's strawberry festival. So come join us. We'll be there March 5th, nine to five, so that you can come and love on some, some new fur.
You'll get some pancakes, I got there.
Man, they have strawberry jelly.
Strawberry sort of pancakes are a big deal, big deal.
You can go up and down the aisles.
But animal services, because once we switched over to a no kill shelter, room became a problem.
Yes. Yes.
And cats and dogs, lots of cats, lots of dogs, horses, pigs.
Roosters, ducks.
You got everything out there. You got everything.
Bunnies.
I know one time there was tortoises out there.
Yes. And we've had bearded dragon. We've had a python or two. I mean, it's, it's crazy.
But if you want to go, the month of March, everything, adoptable pet, spay, neuter, chipped, up to date with its shots, got all its shots and everything, for you, $17.
Right. There's no hoops to jump through.
You can't beat that. If people want to find out more information, they want to send you a question or anything, how can they do it?
They can go to, well, they can call me, 352-438-2300. They can go to marionfl.org or they can send me an email, publicrelations@marionfl.org.
And go sign up for the newsletter, folks. It's right there on marioncountyfl.org on the front page. You can sign up for Marion Monthly and get all the information that you need. Stacy Causey, thanks so much for hustling over here. I know, I know you were battling traffic to get over here.
I was trying, but everybody was nice. So I appreciate that.
So we'll see you or County Commissioner Kathy Bryant in a couple, couple of weeks?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for all you do for the county. We'll be right back after this timeout on WOCA The Source.
Broadcasting from the Ocala International Airport, this is WOCA AM, W242 CA FM, Ocala, 1370 AM, 96.3 FM, The Source.
How understanding weeds will help you with your plan.
USA Radio News with Lance Pride. Russia appears to be stepping up its death and destruction campaign in Ukraine. Over 1 million refugees have now fled the invaded country. Member of Parliament of the United Kingdom, Damian Hines on Sky News Thursday morning.
These families, mothers, children who have had these extraordinary difficult journeys in the most horrible circumstances. And our country is absolutely stepping up to the plate as other friends and neighbors across Europe are doing to make sure that in this time of their greatest need, we are there for the, for the Ukrainian people.
The International Paralympic Committee announced Thursday it will block athletes from Russia and Belarus from the Beijing 2022 Paralympic Games due to the Russian invasion of Ukraine. The game starts Friday. The January 6th Select Committee says it has evidence former President Trump may have engaged in criminal acts to overturn the results of-